Good morning and welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for January 5th, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we'd also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that either please turn it to silent or turn it off. If you need to take a call, please step to the hallway so the meeting isn't disrupted. Items one through 10 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items: Item 2, 16 PD 046; Item 5, 16 PD 064; and Item 6, 16 PD 065. The Rapid City Planning Commission's action on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through 10 that staff would like removed? Are there any items one through 10 that any planning commissioner would like removed from the agenda for separate consideration? And are there any items one through 10 that any audience member would like removed for separate consideration? Commissioner Rollinger made the motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through 10, per staff recommendation. Karen seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11.
Morning. Item number 11 is a final plan development to allow a town home development property located on the southeast corner of Dilger Avenue and Monroe Street. This is a proposed affordable housing project. I'd like to disclose at the beginning that Mike Kwasny was in to see the file and that Karen Bullman did email me with a question about setbacks. Let's take a look at the property. It's located, it's a zone medium density residential district just north of the civic center. Aerial view, the structure that is shown in this picture has actually been demoed, so it is a void of structural development at this time. Featured land use shows it as urban neighborhood, which supports higher density residential. And a major street plan shows North Street as a collector and Fifth Street Hanes to the east as an arterial street. The applicant is requesting seven exceptions as part of this plan development. The first exception is to lot size. One of the issues that the applicant indicated was that decreasing the amount of buildable area or developed area would decrease the cost, thus making these units more affordable. So reducing from 4,000 square feet, we can see that there's 759, 870, 1,105, 1,219, and 1,305 square foot lots. This is made up for by the common lot area, which is the sixth lot. There is an additional preliminary subdivision plan, which was on the consent agenda, 16 PL 121, which is for the planning of this property. The common lot area will provide the open space, drainage, additional parking for the units, but the decreasing the size, the square footage of the lots will decrease, hopefully, the price of the units. Carrying into that, the second exception is to increase the allowed lot coverage on four of the lot, three lots, from 40% to 41.3%, 47.4%, and 43.8%. And that's for lots three, four, and five. If we take a look at the overall lot coverage, it's somewhere around 21% for the town home development. Again, that common lot area is providing the open space, green space, and drainage and additional parking. So staff is supporting these, recommending to support these two exceptions. The third exception is for rear yard and side yard setbacks. All the lots, as the lot lines go around the structures, will have to, are requesting a reduction in rear yard setback from 25 feet to zero feet. The common lot area provides approximately 24.74 feet of setback from that property to the south. In addition, there's 12 feet between the units, another 20 feet to the right of way or property line on Dilger Avenue, and 11.6 feet to the alley. Because of the common lottery, the unique layout of this development, staff is supporting the reduction in rear yard setbacks and side yard setbacks. Specifically, the side yards are on these four lots. The next exception is to parking. Each unit has first floor part garages. So Unit 1, this one, and this one all have two car garages. These lots here are smaller lots, one bedroom townhomes, and they have one car garages on the, in the, on the first floor. These two parking spaces located in the common lot area, which will be accessed off the aisle or the alley, will be dedicated to those two units, thus providing the two parking spots per unit for this development. And so staff's supporting or recommends that that exception be granted. Next exception is that a minimum 15, or 16 feet of lot width per unit or per lot. This lot here has a lot width of 15.19, which is the width of the structure. There's no way really to make that any wider. Access is still being provided with the shared approach. And it's, it's based on the width of the unit, which is 15.19 feet, and it's very minimal. And thus, staff is recommending that that exception be granted. There's so many of these, I, let's see. Okay, next one is the height exception. In the medium density residential district, the maximum allowed height is two and a half stories or 35 feet. The applicant is requesting an exception to allow three stories. Nice thing about this is that they're still going to be less than 35 feet to the mean of the peak or mean of the roof, it's 31 points, or 31 and a half feet. So it's still going to be below the maximum height. They just need that extra half story because they're, because they're putting the garages on that first level. And staff is recommending that that exception be granted as well. I think that takes us through all of the exception requests. Here's another rendering of the elevation, some layouts. So we've got garages on the first floor, living area on the second floor, and bedrooms, I believe, on the third floor. Sign is posted on the property. As you can see, it's, the former dwelling has been demolished. This is looking east along Monroe and to the west, the intersection with Dilger. Looking to the north, north along Dilger Avenue, and to the south towards the civic center. And another view into the property. One of the things I did not mention was that the right of way width for Monroe Street and Dilger Avenue is excessive for the category of street. Only 52 feet is required, and I believe it's, it's, let's see, 80 feet of right of way. So we have these wide boulevards on either side of the street. This will lessen the impact of the height and the density being proposed. This is a good project, brings some affordable housing into an area of the city, diversifying the housing in the city, and hopefully, this is a template for affordable housing in the city in the future. With that, staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. I believe there is a speaker request form, and the applicant is in the audience to answer any questions. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Thank you, Fletcher. Any questions for staff? We'll go to the speaker request forum then. Chuck Roush.
Thank you. So I am the neighbor adjoining to the south of this property.
Could you state your name and address just for our record?
My name is Chuck Roush. I live at 602 Dilger Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm the neighbor to the south of this property. I came and talked to Fletcher yesterday, so that saved everybody a lot of headaches. Just several issues. One is, how many people can live in this total unit? How many total people can you allow in there, and can you control that? So let's say 14 maximum would be my number. That would be two people each in the single bedrooms and four people in the double bedrooms, two-bedroom places. Well, as long as it's on my head, I would like a privacy fence between my property and theirs. That could benefit them as well as me. The, the structure is, looks really nice. And as long as they put up the color and the architecture as they have presented it to you, I think we've got a nice building here. If they go with white siding and lay it all up there, ruins the whole thing. So I don't know how you get involved in that, but if you could make sure that the ambiance, or whatever you want to call it, of, of this unit or this project is maintained, I think that's critical. Things like power lines and cable TV lines and all that, how do you deal with that? You're just going to run them across from the alley like we are now? You know, one or two, I guess, is the way it goes, but if you have five of them running across there, you know, can you control that? Did I mention no pets? That would be nice. Or a certain size, or get control of the animals. And those are the things I've written down right now. So I think this could be a nice setup, it'd be all right, but it is pushing people onto the, a lot more people onto a lot smaller lot. You know, and 20 feet is what, from the center of Eric's sign to maybe the, to the row of tree of chairs here? Now, it's pretty tight. So it's doable, but, and then you want to use this for other examples around the city and do this some more. I think it's really important to get it right, and then I think it'd work fine. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Roush? Oh, I've got a light up from Mike. So we do have Steve's motion on the floor to approve the staff stipulations. We can take that and have discussion. Is there a second for Steve's motion?
All second, just so we have a discussion.
Okay. All right, Karen made the second. We'll go to Mike Kwasny.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think the development has some true benefits. There, we're doing a lot of exceptions, and this is the, a template, as it's been said, for future. So I think to Chuck Roush's comment there, I think it's important that we get it proper. The number of people in an area there is, is quite a concern also. You're putting a lot of people into a small lot, you're making a lot of exceptions. So I guess, what a, how will this reflect back to the people that want to buy the houses? I have that question. How do they gain from this? I know that the developer's getting a lot of different financing according to what's been stated, but is, how does this come back to the people that are going to buy these homes, making them affordable? Because that's what our end goal is. And, and how do we ask that question, I guess? Or who do we ask that question to?
Well, is there a representative from the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chair, maybe Joy McCracken, who was our applicant, could come forward and address that.
That'd be great. Since you're coming up, I'll, I'll add a second one. These are owned units. Maybe you could describe the, how the common area will be cared for after they're all owned by separate folks, but please start with Mr. Kwasny.
I'm Joy McCracken, and I'm the executive director of Dakota Land Trust as well as NeighborWorks Dakota Home Resources, which is the two nonprofits involved in the project. And to answer your question about affordability, a lot of it is driven by the sources of funding that's going into the project. Some of the funding will be passed on to the applicant to keep the homes as affordable as they ma, as they can be. And we're also have other down payment and closing cost assistance, and that is income-driven. Some of our programs go up to 115% of the area medium income, so we are really targeting the workforce in Rapid City. And so all of that is, all of those programs are passed on to the homeowner to keep it affordable. And to address your, your comment on the, the maintenance, there will be an HOA, and all of these five units will be required to be owner-occupied, and the HOA will maintain the property. As nonprofits, we are going to be staying engaged with the property and helping the residents through that HOA process, and so that they will, help them maintain that property into the future.
Thank you. A follow-up, if I may, the, how long do these units stay affordable? I mean, if somebody purchases one with the assistance that you mentioned, do they have the option of turning around and selling it? Will the, I guess, the requirements continue on?
Right.
Or do they stay with the property, you know?
Again, it depends on the funding sources. Some of the funding sources is five years, and if they go with Dakota Land Trust, which is, could provide up to $20,000 with assistance, that's into perpetuity, that is forever. Land Trust owns the land, and the homeowner will buy the, the unit and lease the land. And Dakota Land Trust always owns the land, so it is forever.
Thank you. Mike, did you have any follow-up?
Yes. I've read in the paper and different places that the price for these is going to be somewhere between 100, and it's gone up to as high as 146,000, but the last I saw was 120. What, is that what we see the price range to be for these?
You know, it is surprising how much it does cost to build them. You know, the kitchens and the bathrooms in our homes are the most expensive rooms to build, and beyond that, there is not a lot of other space. So the cost is going to run between 100 and 140, ranging from, you know, depending on size of the unit. If, again, if the funding sources all come to the table, those will all reflect in, and we hope to get the price down to the 120, I think that's what you read, because that's where we hope to be. And that, that's depending on funding sources.
Okay, then they're going to make it up with interest. The interest rate will be, I'm assuming, lower. Do they get?
Yeah, they'll be working with local, local lenders, and so the interest rate will vary, because they'll get traditional financing, so the interest rate is determined by the lender.
Okay, thank you.
Probably most of these will be first-time home buyers, I'm going to assume, and like today's rate with South Dakota Housing is like 3.25%.
So being a first-time home buyer, they will have problems getting, sometimes getting into these, so I'm, I'm hearing that there might be assistance for somebody that might have difficulty getting into a home like this?
Yes, that's the beauty of the, of the nonprofits being involved. NeighborWorks provides credit counseling and the down payment and closing cost assistance. So whatever their barrier is, we will work with them to try to release, to remove the barriers.
Once they get into this house, kind of going onto the chair's comment there, they can't afford it, then they sell it, then it becomes a regular house, depending on how the new buyer buys it? It's not affordable housing. It changes the scope of the, the whole area, doesn't it?
Again, it goes back to the funding sources. Some of the down payment and closing cost assistance, it requires affordability for like a five-year period, meaning that they can only take a certain percent of equity, 5% per year. So that kind of drives the sales price in the future. With Dakota Land Trust, it is a shared equity, so the homeowner agrees going in that they will not take 100% of their equity with them. It stays with the property, so it stays affordable perpetually.
Okay, thank you.
Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to make a, a comment about the, the units and what we're doing. I think this is a creative way to, to try to bring affordable housing into our community. And as Mr. Roush said, it looks good, and we cannot tell you how to build your houses and things that Chuck really wanted, you know, in your, in his statement there. But I guess I would like to ask you, do you plan to have something similar to what is on the, the screen that we saw?
Absolutely. That is exactly how we plan to build them.
Okay, and then the other question that he talked about, as far as a privacy fence, on the screen, again, they showed trees in the background, and I think that was the privacy part that you're going to have between him and, and your property. Is that correct, or am I in the wrong spot?
I don't believe that there is a row of trees that would create a visual buffer along that rear lot line.
Okay, maybe I'm thinking.
There seemed to be one on the, on the picture.
That's what I thought. It looked like there was trees.
I believe there's, trees are there, but I don't think they'll create the physical buffer that Mr. Roush is, is requesting.
Okay.
It, it can be offered by the applicant.
The bushes are on the adjacent property.
Okay, they were not trees or bushes. Okay, okay.
They're coming down too. They're overgrown.
Mr. Chair.
Vicki.
So, thank you, Karen, that, that's a wonderful issue to bring back up. Because this, these are two residential developments adjacent to the, to each other, the ordinance doesn't require that there be a screening fence between the two? And in the spirit of trying to ensure that these do remain affordable, obviously, staff has been challenged as well to look at this in, in trying to reduce that cost, and fencing can be a fairly high cost. So noting that they do have the common area as that buffer, and it's slightly less than what any other backyard would be required for an apartment building, we thought that the five units supported the, the reduction in the rear yard without the privacy fence at this time.
Okay. I just, I thought the privacy fence wouldn't be tall enough to do a lot of good, but, you know, everything helps, and I was hoping that those were trees back there, but, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki.
If I might, because I think that Mr. Roush did have some wonderful comments, and certainly, as the city is supporting the development of more and more affordable housing throughout our community, we, we never want to do so at the detriment of existing neighborhoods. And there's some wonderful components to this neighborhood. As we drove up there and looked around, we see that, that there's a lot of owner pride already in that neighborhood, and we want to ensure that that is maintained. The ordinance, as it stands today, does have regulations on pets and the number of unrelated people that can live in a residence, and I think we can fall upon that. If there were issues with these being turned into like a frat house of sorts, that's something that we could speak to if there was complaints from the neighborhood. But there is no provision in our ordinance, and I don't know that the city wants to take on that limitation, saying that if you're a family, you can only be a family of so many people. And so I wouldn't encourage limiting the number of occupants, because these are going to be owner-occupied by families. Again, the pets, our animal control section of our ordinance should assist if there are concerns with that. And because there isn't a fence, maybe that will encourage those occupants not to have an animal, because you, they won't have a fence in their backyard. I would assume because these are owner-occupied, there will probably be individual utility lines to those units, because they'll all get their separate bills, and I don't know if Joy, or one of her development team, can speak to how that's going to be designed. But overall, we've looked at it with some of the same con- But overall, we've looked at it with some of the same concerns that Mr. Roush did speak to today, and the compromise was that, for us to come on board with all the exceptions, to encourage the affordability of these units to the greatest degree possible, we too were intrigued with the design that they presented. And Marshall Goodman, who has done previous proposals before the city in years past, does a great project. And we also liked the colored elevations that Chuck referred to. Because they are asking for the exceptions, and because they have presented the elevations as you've seen today, we could adjust the last stipulation to read that any changes to the elevations, as presented, would require a major amendment to the plan development, so that, let me say, any changes to the character of the elevation, obviously, these are not intended to be exact, but it's to speak to the character, so that if they didn't have the mix of colors and some of the other components, the peaked roofs and such, we could come back and look at that to see what impact that would have. So if the amendment-makers would concur with a friendly amendment to their motion, excuse me, to the motion-makers, to their motion, that we revise stipulation 14 to have it added in, that any changes to the character of the elevations will require a major amendment to the plan development, perhaps that would give Mr. Roush some assurance, too, that what we all looked at and liked is what's going to be constructed.
Move that we make the changes that she just spoke about.
Okay. All right, so we're adding the stipulation that the character, as presented, remain the same, unless a major amendment is requested. Steve, you also have a light up to speak.
Thank you. You know, as you look across the nation, everybody's trying to find a way to do affordable housing, and you have to think outside the box in order to do that. It'd be much easier to walk in here, put an apartment complex there, and you have tons of people, cars coming and going. It would, it would just be the normal, you know, way to make a profit. So I like the idea here, and I think what's going to make this probably even better is that if this is going to be kind of a model for it to go forward, they're going to want to do it right the first time. So looking at what they're showing here, I really like what I see, and I appreciate Charles for coming in and from a person living next door to this, I mean, I'd be concerned, too, but my biggest concern would be dumping an apartment complex there, and there's two of them over where I live that just got the one in there, and they've done a really good job of apartments, but I like the idea of trying to get a place where somebody can afford it. And the way to keep it affordable, too, that question has come up, and we've had low-income housing in Rapid City all over the place. This is different in that, if I'm going to be looking for a house, that's competing against what's on the market. So if I'm looking affordability-wise, the other homes, like the homes that most of us live in, will probably be more expensive, so it's always going to keep those probably in a pretty good range, just by the near nature of how they're built and what they're there for. So I really appreciate what you're trying to do, thinking outside of the box, and that's why I think I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Get a light back up from Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was one, they commented on the paving the alleyway, that that was future. When they say future, are they doing it before it's done, or?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
So before they can get their certificate of occupancy, all of the improvements need to be in place, and that includes paving the access, shared access in front of the units and the alley, as well as some utility construction.
Thank you.
I think it's a great thing that we're trying to do here, and I don't see a lot of, a lot of problems. I think there's a lot of exceptions, but I think that this is something that the, I hope it works well, and I hope that the template is something that we can use, and it's a great example for future. So, thank you.
John.
You mentioned, you having a HOA. Now, have you drawn up any covenants? Because the covenants would protect a lot of these issues, like pets, occupancy, exteriors, how they can change it since they're the owner. I'm just wondering if you've gone that far.
We're in the process of doing that. We have contacted an attorney and who is drawing those up based on other similar housing opportunity, or homeownership, homeowners associations, and that is our intent, is that we put several covenants in place to, so that we do maintain them, and they always look good into the future. I don't, they are not in complete yet, they're in progress.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Vicki.
If I might, stipulations of the associated preliminary subdivision plan requires that there be maintenance agreements in place for the shared access, the shared parking, and the common area, and we anticipate that that will all be included in that same covenant agreement. So certainly, when that comes in, our attorney's office will be reviewing it as well, and that will get recorded with the plating of the property. So before they ever sell it, those documents will be in place.
Thank you. Ms. McCracken, a couple of questions. First on that, do you, are you going to get a, are you going to be able to estimate what the HOA cost going forward will be and provide that to the buyers upfront, just so they have a warning, so to speak, of that?
Yeah, absolutely. The HOA is actually going to be taking care of the insurance of the exterior of the building, and that will all be paid through the HOA, because if there happens to be a hailstorm, you want all of the units repaired, not just some. And so because of, and we have looked into that cost, and so because of that cost, it will run between $50 and $75 a month.
Thank you. The other one, just goes back to the privacy fence. Did you have any thoughts on that as you worked on putting this project together? You know, it's a, there's always that saying, good fences make good neighbors.
We have, to be honest, no, we have not. Because of the common lot in the back, there, it's not like the property will be sitting right adjacent to the other properties. There's common area all the way around it, and again, the common area will be maintained by the HOA. So we, you know, we anticipate green space that's maintained, and I have not, to be honest, thought about a privacy fence, no.
Thank you. Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I'm the liaison from the council, and I did have a couple of questions for you. As soon as this is approved, and I think it will be approved from what I can hear here, do you have any idea on completion date, or anything that you're kind of headed towards?
We, it is our goal to have them up and going by early summer.
Okay. And then do you, would the people have to be, apply to even be considered for this housing? I mean, before they get their financing or whatever, do they have to apply, you know, to be considered as low-income, working, low-income, those kinds of people that would be most suited for this type of housing?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
Is there an application before you get into the home?
Not anything different from any other home, unless you're applying for the funding. You know, if you need additional funding, then there is an application for that.
Well, I know as a community and as a council, we've been searching for these kinds of solutions to the low-income housing population for a long time, so this is a very welcome and refreshing project for me to see. I think, as I understand it, many of the people that are in the motel occupied housing right now could actually afford this. They're paying just as much to stay there for a month that they could afford a home like this. So I just think it's a step in the right direction for our entire community, and thank you for your work on this.
Karen.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to make one short comment. This is a nice neighborhood up there. It's an older neighborhood, but it's, it's just a nice area, and I think anything that would be built up there would be a plus. It'll kind of be different for the neighborhood to see something like this, but I think the building that you've, you know, provided and shown us, it looks like it would fit in with that neighborhood, and I hope that it does go well. I know that NeighborWorks is a good organization, so I have a lot of confidence that it'll go forward just fine, and I think we will see more of these in the, in the future, so that's just a comment. Thank you.
John Brewer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Did I hear you reference that actually the project is positioned as workforce housing?
You know, I, I did, because there's not income restrictions on it. From the comments that we've been receiving, we, we do feel there's young professionals in our community that will be very interested. And, you know, with the Dakota Land Trust, we have 26 families in Dakota Land Trust, and 13 of them are single people, single, young, professional people, because when there's only one income in the family, there, it's really limited as to how much home they can afford.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that point. I think the community has been working well over a decade with regard to different housing and housing diversification in the community, and to tag it low and moderate income and exclude workforce housing. There's a lot of people in the workforce that would look for this and probably not classify themselves in those categories. So I like the project, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any further questions, comments? We do have an amended motion on the floor. Seeing none, I think we can proceed to a vote. All those in favor of the amended motion, which included a stipulation to require any changes to the character of the design as presented, to be changed through a major amendment, all those in favor of that motion, plus the additional stipulations, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The motion carries. Item number 12.
Thank you. Item number 12 is 16P062, a major amendment to the plan development to allow a mixed use of residential and commercial. This is on 0.4 acres of property known as the Creamy Building located at 201 Main Street. You've seen this out, this property come up through major amendments to the plan development on several occasions in the past few years, generally for the inclusion of additional commercial uses. Today, the applicant is requesting to start introducing some residential units into spaces that were previously commercial. So to give you a point of reference, in the most recently approved plan, major amendment to the plan development, there was a request for an exception to reduce the parking from 164 spaces to zero spaces. As a part of this request today, the applicant is requesting a reduction of parking from 74 spaces to zero spaces. So the inclusion of the additional residential, or the residential units will actually reduce the parking demand on the area substantially. But let me take you through some photos, we could take a look at the property. As you can see, it's Zone General Commercial District today. This is in an area that's experiencing a lot of redevelopment, introduction of residential units into the commercial uses that are existing today. Actually, following this application, we'll be looking at property less than a block away from here for a similar development project, so please keep that in mind. Airview of the property, a thing to note here, there are some onsite parking spaces that exist today. However, those parking spaces do not comply with the requirements of the Rapid City Municipal Code with regards to design. So while the reduction in parking is from 74 spaces to zero, there are a total of 13 parking spaces located on the site today, which do not comply with the requirements of code. Future land use shows the area is intended for downtown. This is an area that is central to the recently adopted downtown master plan. We'll get into that a little bit later. Both Main Street and St. Joseph Street at this location are revitalization corridors, and principal arterial streets as identified on the major street plan. So look at the site. As I noted before, we do have some non-conforming parking spaces located here and here. To give you a point of reference, this is the suite of the former Hay Camp Brewing Company, who just moved across, or over to Kansas City Street, and should be open shortly. But just to give you a point of reference, so this would be Main Street here. Look at the suites as they exist. This is the basement, the main floor, and the second floor. The applicant is requesting that a total of nine of the units that exist today be converted for residential use. Look at the sign posted in the window today. This would be Second Street looking towards the south and the county parking facility, and looking at Main Street towards the west. This is the existing parking, it has existed as it is today. One of the stipulations of approval is in support of the reduction in parking, provided that the onsite parking that exists today be signed and enforced as resident-only parking. So with the inclusion of the nine residential units, we need to ensure that parking is secured onsite for them. So a total of 13 parking spaces would be required to be striped and signed on the site, and as well as two ADA parking spaces, which, as I mentioned before, don't meet ADA requirements, but still provide that access for ADA accessibility throughout the building. I'll look at the alleyway and the balance of the parking located on the site today, which is primarily accessed through the alley. One more look at the rear of the building to the north, along Second Street. So as we've discussed, the reduction in parking that they are requesting is actually less than the reduction in parking that was previously approved for the site, and with the introduction of the residential units on the site, we do need to secure that residential parking, and we can do that through striping and signage enforcement of the parking on the site for residential use only. And with that, staff is recommending that the request be approved and is available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Robert. John Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments. One, the development of the Creamy over the last number of years has been a great restoration, revitalization of a, kind of a iconic building downtown, and this conversion, I think, is in line with what the owners have been trying to do. Done a nice job with the building, so I'm going to be in support of it. My comments today actually run to our liaison that's here, and an encouragement to the city council, along with planning, to revisit the parking requirements in the East of Fifth Plan. The Wharton Study that was done maybe 10, 11 years ago regarding people that live downtown, who lives downtown, and how that has changed over the last two decades, really has a different look on parking. And so people that live downtown may have zero cars, usually have one car. They find out for themselves in urban settings how to find a place to park, whether it's that ramp down the street you saw in the picture looking to the east, or whether it's some of those spaces that'll be lined at the building. So in order to facilitate and save staff and this organization's discussion on parking at almost every development, that maybe we do take a look at that ordinance and bring that forward for consideration, so it's more in line. I think one and a half cars per residential unit, is that what it states now in the downtown? In the, outside the central business district? Yeah.
John, would you repeat that?
Is it one and a half parking spaces per residential unit now?
Yes, for multifamily.
And I think that's probably not in tune with what we're trying to get done downtown. So at any rate, I think that ought to be brought forward, that we ought to be deliberating that change to make this development and revitalization more in line with what's going on. I like the project, and I'll be in support of it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen?
Thank you. I agree with everything that John has just said. I think that there has been a lot of changes in this building, but just look at all the housing that is now going farther east of Fifth Street. It's just amazing what the changes, just in this, today's agenda, I think. And so I think that's, that's a commendable thing, that the community's doing that. My question, I guess, really is, is, I think I read in the staff report something about the fire department, whether it's sprinkled and that kind of thing. Is that accurate? Did I read that right?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, the building is actually protected throughout at this point. We've worked for a number of years to retrofit that structure, and Sandy McNeely and her husband have done a great job with doing that, and it is now complete. And if there's adjustments that need to be made through the reconstruction process, they'll, they'll just take care of that, so, thank you.
Thanks, I thought it was. Thanks. I thought it was, but I, I just couldn't remember for sure. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this, with staff, with the stipulations, if there are any.
Karen made the motion to approve with stipulations. John seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item thirteen.
Thank you. Item thirteen is sixteen P zero six three, a final plan development to allow mixed use of commercial and residential development to be located on zero point four or five acres of land located at one eighteen Main Street. To give you a sense of where we're at, this is the Creamery Building that we just discussed. This is the property that we're talking about shaded. One point of clarification here, our staff noticed that the plan development boundary located to the west of this subject property is actually incorrect on, on our systems. We have taken the time to get that corrected, but we weren't able to update this graphic for you. So that plan development and the subject property do not intersect. Properties on General Commercial District in an area developing, or kind of redeveloping right now. This plan development here is Armadillo's. This one here is the new Black Hills Federal Credit Union, and as I noted, the Creamery Building is located south of Main Street, too, so we're seeing a lot of activity in this area. I mentioned in the previous application, the, the object is identified in the downtown master plan. One of those is of the addition of up to three hundred residential units in this area between Fifth Street and School of Mines in the next five years, I think it is. With this application and the one previous, we're up to eighteen, so, or seventeen, so we've got a ways to go. I'll look at the aerial of the property. The existing structure will be utilized as part of the redevelopment of, with eight residential units and one commercial unit on the site. Property to the west is currently under construction as a part of the new Armadillo's development. It's down, part of the downtown master core and honor revitalization corridor, as well as a principal arterial street. This is a floor plan, looking what they're doing. As I said, they're retrofitting the existing structure, so no additions or expansions proposed for the existing structure. The lot to the west is actually proposed to be designed as a carport with provision of, sorry, of fifteen parking, off-street parking spaces. As a part of that proposal, they are proposing to remove the, the access point onto Main, Main Street, and instead access this parking through the alleyway located to the north, which, you know, the elimination of the curb cut, addition of landscaping to buffer that parking lot, seems desirable through our comprehensive plan, downtown master plan. Look at the elevation of the structure today. Take note of the, of the bottom west elevation here, as you can see, the addition of doors for the individual dwelling units. Rendering of what the carport with the proposed revision, or reconstruction of the building looks like today. This is what the site looks like today. I'll look at Main Street as well, looking towards the Creamery Building. No, I'm sorry, looking away from the Creamery Building towards the east. This is a look at the eastern side of the structure. Recently, city council approved a no build easement on this side, or on the property adjacent to the east in order to be able to accommodate windows for this side of the building. And this is a look at the west side of the building, where the carport would be located at, as well as the dwelling unit. So as we can see, there's construction ongoing on the site. And one more look at the property as a whole. The applicant has requested several exceptions as part of this. The first is a reduction in the amount of required off-street parking from nineteen spaces to fifteen spaces. The fifteen spaces will accommodate the residential use provided on the proper, proposed for the property. So again, we are ensuring that the residential parking is being accommodated for on the site. The additional four parking spaces would be for the commercial use. It's located on Main Street, on the storefront. The on-street parking available in that area should accommodate that use. They are requesting an exception to reduce the required amount of landscaping from ten thousand five hundred points to five thousand two hundred fifty points. However, in an attempt to maximize the amount of residential parking on the site and to provide landscaping where it will provide the most amount of use and utility to the site and to the public, they are proposing to put that landscaping and, or at least a major portion of that landscaping adjacent to the Main Street right away to buffer the parking lot from the neighboring street right away and to maintain that revitalized streetscape. And finally, they are requesting an exception to reduce the required front yard setback from twenty-five feet to zero feet. The zero feet is for the existing structure. We should note that the proposed carport is actually located at sixteen feet from the front property line. So while that is also a reduction in parking, remember, we do intend, intend that this area will be part of the downtown in the near future, and that there are no setbacks required in the Central Business District today. I should note here, too, that Karen Bowman and I have had some conversations regarding the setbacks and point out that if there was any expansion of use in the future to include more dwelling units, more commercial space, that would require a major amendment to the plan development, and you would be looking at this again if they needed additional reductions and setbacks for parking at that time. So staff is in support of the requested exceptions. Again, this is a, a good model project for introducing residential and commercial mixed uses into this area east of the downtown, and hopefully we'll be seeing some measures to start incorporating this part into an updated downtown master plan in the future. Staff is recommending to approve this application with the stipulations noted in the staff report. And we do have representatives available to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. So the exceptions that they're requesting will, will be, will match the downtown requirements if this ever becomes a downtown district?
Yes. Now, we don't know precisely what a new, when any new zoning regulations regarding this area might entail, but they do reflect what the downtown master plan shows as adopted.
So it would match if it stayed, if it was the same as the downtown?
If it were the Central Business District zoning today, it would match that, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments on this item?
With approval.
John made the motion to approve with staff stipulations. Galen seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, before you go on to your next item, I would just like to thank the Planning Commission for their consideration on the last two items. They in, they were in our general commercial district, as you know, today. Here a few months ago, Puma came to, before you, and presented the downtown master plan with the recommendation to create a downtown zoning district that would have reduced parking at approximately thirty-five percent of what it would be if it were general commercial, with some unique amenities and landscaping that might offset some of the other requirements in trying to improve the street view of, of these properties. We've looked at that document. Staff has met on it. We will continue to meet on it. You will see that in the future as a revision to our ordinance. We are meeting with downtown organizations as well to ensure that it meets with their needs as well. So thank you for that. A part of the, the downtown master plan encouraged the mix of business and residential uses. Today, we use the plan development as a tool to get there. Hopefully, when this district is adopted, you won't see as many of these planned developments. They'll just be permitted. But thank you for your consideration in granting all these exceptions. It is kind of a test pilot, to some degree, on what we anticipate creating as a permitted use in an ordinance. Thank you.
Excuse me. John, did you have a comment?
To that point, in research before this item today, I did go to the city website. I would ask that the webpage, a lot of the documents were updated since, as, or late as last October have not been added. I'm certainly not the IT guru on a computer, but the page has just said, you know, "not updated yet." So as soon as possible, that would be nice if those documents were available. And they, they probably are, but they weren't on my computer yesterday, so.
And John, maybe we can visit about that after the meeting, and you can, we can be specific. Thank you so much.
All right, item fourteen.
Good morning. Sarah Hansel, Long Range Planning Department. Item number fourteen is a request from the city of Rapid City to consider an application for a resolution of intent to annex the Big Sky subdivision. Since we don't see involuntary annexations very frequently, I'm going to go through some additional background slides with some information about the history of this project, and then also a comparison of the involuntary process versus the voluntary process. Here's a map of the annexation area shown in red in the context of the, the whole city of Rapid City. This area is comprised of about forty acres. It's generally located east of Elkvale Road, north of Twilight Drive, west of Reservoir Road, and south of Homestead, Homestead Street. Here's an aerial view of the property showing, it's currently developed with about a hundred and thirty, there are one hundred and thirty-one single-family homes developed here. That development is consistent with the future land use category for this area, showing urban neighborhood. I'm sorry, low-density neighborhood. I knew that didn't sound right. This is a major street plan, showing that Dicky's Drive is a collector street. And here is showing the existing zoning, which is Pennington County zoning. This is suburban residential. And property to the north of this is generally zoned low-density residential. Here's some site photographs that were taken earlier in December. This is the corner of Dicky's looking down Avenue A from Dicky's Drive. Here's looking north past that same intersection. This photo is showing the intersection of Aurora Drive and Hanson Lane. You can see the topography of this area is, there's definitely some rolling, rolling hills and topography here. This view is of Hanson Lane looking down towards the intersection that was shown in the previous photograph. Another view moving through the development. And then finally, this photograph is looking down Carl Avenue, and this is on the easternmost boundary of the annexation area. So hopefully, that kind of gives some context of the character of the neighborhood. Like I said, I just want to kind of briefly go through some of the major points, what has been going on out here in the last several years. This property was platted in the late nineteen nineties. At the time it was platted, it was not contiguous to Rapid City, so it was not required to be annexed. However, there are annexation agreements in place for about half of the properties in this area. Over the years, though, there have been various efforts to annex, and they have not been successful. More recently, in July of two thousand fourteen, the city hosted an open house in the neighborhood at the school up there to discuss road repairs that would be contingent on annexation, and petitions were distributed. At that time, the few months shortly after, about thirty percent of the signatures that would be needed for a voluntary annexation were required. Later that year, the Pennington County Commissioners discussed this area and snow plowing services at length at a series of four of their meetings. At that time, the city and the county decided to send this, this letter that they would prepare together to the residents in the area, and just encourage them one more time to fill out that petition. There was a, a large influx of petitions, and there were several community members who did a lot of great work going door-to-door, trying to get petitions at that time. And they, they were able to secure seventy-five percent of the valuation signatures that they needed. However, they were not able to get the required number of registered voter signatures. So basically, a voluntary annexation for this property is just not possible because of people who are registered to vote there, who no longer live there, who may have, who are perhaps deceased, or have, have since moved on and not updated their, their registration. So then finally, January two thousand sixteen, the city council directed staff to prepare the annexation study and initiate the involuntary annexation process. This chart shows comparison of the two processes. As you can see, the voluntary annexation is out of the picture at this point, but the residents in the area were able to secure the property value signatures that they needed. So then, just looking ahead at kind of the, the chart where the course we're on right now, the council directed staff to conduct the annexation study. I'll talk just briefly about that more in a moment. The annexation study has to identify the need to annex the property and the resources that it will take for the city and the residents to become part of the city. After that, a notice of resolution of intent is sent to property owners and the county auditor. Those are required to be sent by certified mail, and I believe there's some people in the audience today who have that with them. Then the resolution of intent to annex is heard by the Planning Commission, the Legal and Finance Committee, and the city council. Now, if that is approved, then we go through this process again. And the notice of resolution, the, excuse me, the notice of resolution of annexation, this is what's actually annexing the property, that notice again is sent by certified mail to the property owners. We go through the three public hearings. And then, assuming it's approved, the annexation becomes effective twenty days after that. So for a voluntary annexation, which you all are quite familiar with, it's about thirty days to go through the whole process. For the involuntary annexation, it takes several months. So that's where we're headed. You hopefully recognize the annexation study. This was linked to the project information, and generally, this calls out, you know, why we're annexing this, and, and what are the resources that the city's going to commit itself to expending if it becomes part of the municipal boundary. Just generally, this is a chart showing the majority of what's in the annexation study, which is what services the city will provide, what the cost of those services to the city will be, and the timeline that those services will be provided. And in a moment, I'll also talk about cost to property owners. I want to point out two areas of this chart. The red text that you see towards the bottom of the screen identifies the majority of the cost to the city associated with this annexation, and that is the estimated, just about nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that the city is estimating that the road repairs in this area will cost once the area is annexed. If this annexation moves along smoothly and is annexed without delays, the Public Works Department is estimating that the repairs will be completed within the two thousand seventeen construction schedule. And this nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars is something that the city already has accounted for and has budgeted to, to spend. And then the second item I want to point out is this payment to the fire district. As you may recall from the previous annexation that we brought forward to you, the, the city, when annexing property that's located in a rural fire district that has outstanding debt, has the option to pay that fire district the proportion of the annexations, the, the portion of the, the debt that that annexation accounts for, because essentially, the city is reducing the tax base of the fire district. So for this particular annexation, if the city were to choose to pay that, it would be what we're estimating currently at a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars. Just a little bit more about that. If you're curious, the Rapid Valley Rural Fire Protection District has an outstanding debt in the loan in the amount of three point six million dollars. So the city has the option to pay all of this amount, or a portion of it, or they also have the option to pay none of it. If the city decides not to pay this, the county auditor actually can set up a separate debt district levy for this area. This is a, a debt district that they calculate each year depending on valuation and the remaining amount of debt. Currently, we estimate that if this were to happen, the debt levy would be point three zero per one thousand dollars in valuation. So as an example, if a home in this area has a taxable valuation of two hundred thousand dollars, that would be about sixty dollars a year extra in their taxes. So, so that's an option. And then you notice the motion today is that the Planning Commission can make their recommendation on the annexation. If you'd like to also comment on whether or not this should be paid, or, or how much, if you have any thoughts on that that you'd like to include in your motion, you may also do that as well. Ultimately, the, the council will also discuss that and decide, but the Planning Commission is welcome to comment on that. And then we also looked at what the property taxes, the estimated changes would be. I have this set up two ways. One, if the city does pay the fire district in full, and then another if they do not. So current, the current levy is sixteen point one five eight per one thousand dollars in valuation. So we're estimating that that would go up by, up to seventeen point four nine seven. This represents, again, as an example, just to put some actual real number, hard numbers on it, for a two hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be an increase of about two hundred and sixty-eight dollars per year. If the city does not pay the fire district debt, we have an additional levy for that fire debt district, and we're estimating that that would- fire debt district, and we're estimating that that would increase three-hundred and twenty-seven dollars per year for, as an example, for a home that's assessed at two-hundred thousand dollars. Some other costs for residents that are identified in the annexation study. One is a stormwater utility fee. We are estimating this at about thirty dollars per property per year for the average home in the area. And then also solid waste collection services. The residents in the area will need to sign on to city garbage collection and recycling within a year. And there's an eighty-dollar sign-on service fee and deposit, and then it's eighteen, just under nineteen dollars a month, per month after that. And we have heard anecdotal evidence from several residents that this is actually lower than what many of them are paying currently. This chart shows what's identified in the staff report as your sort of criteria for making this decision as to whether or not to annex this area. The 2001 city annexation policy has six criteria, and generally, all of them are met. The one that's not met is essentially not applicable because there's no commercial or industrial development in this area. I just want to recap the decision options. Approve the resolution of intent and direct staff to include payment to the Rapid Valley Rural Fire Protection District, or approve the resolution of intent and direct staff to not include that language, or to deny the resolution of intent to annex. I just want to point out kind of what we're looking for from the Planning Commission and the city council during this phase of this process is just kind of general direction. Are we going to move forward with working on making that payment or not? So like I said, you're welcome to comment on that if you'd like. Staff is recommending that the resolution of intent to annex this property be approved. And it looks like we may have some questions or comments.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah before we get to the public comment? We'll start then with Linda Soucy. Hopefully, I got your last name correct. And please state your name and address when you come up.
Good morning, and yes, you did pronounce it correctly. Linda Soucy, forty-eight, thirty-six Hanson Lane in Rapid Valley, Big Sky Development. I wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm very nervous, and I hope I have some cohesion to my presentation. I am totally against voluntary annexation, and for several reasons. The last meeting that we had, the city admitted, city representatives admitted, unfortunately, I don't have names, that they had inspected those streets, or the county, and they were negligent in their inspection. So I don't understand why annexation is the reason that we have to get, the way that we get our streets repaired. I also don't understand, and hope that the council has, can shed some light on this for me, why Mr. Doyle Estes, who I am fortunate and pleased is present today, is not being held accountable for any of this. He was the initial developer. He and Ron Shadine and Vivian Shadine sold those homes to all of us in good faith, and yet now it comes back on the homeowners and the city that these repairs for nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars need to be taken care of. I know a lot happens to property in sixteen years, seventeen years, but those roads are deplorable. We as homeowners really, in going through this resolution, don't gain much. Obviously, it's been pointed out that the property tax will not go up tremendously. None of the services really will be any better than what we serve, we get now. The fire, the sheriff, all of that is quite sufficient for us. I don't know what our advantage is to annexation, and what your advantage as a city is, when the gentleman that should be held responsible for that expense, that nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars that's been set aside, should not even have to come out of the city's finances, in my opinion. And I'm hoping that the city can shed some light on that for me. That's all I have.
Thank you. We also have a request from Stan Fried, right? Again, apologies on the name.
Stan Fried, four-eight-eight-four Hanson Lane. I live a couple houses up from Linda there. We both moved in in November of nineteen ninety-nine. We've been dealing with this since then. Well, about a year after is when the roads started going bad. It's been an ongoing battle. We've been basically lied to for fifteen years. Two years ago, I believe it was 2014 when we had the meeting up at the school, and we were talking about annexation, that quote for those roads was nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, I know, I'm in a, work for a business where prices go up, so is that a, they told us it was a rock-solid estimate two years ago. We saw the apartment complex, a couple items earlier, where houses were supposed to be one hundred thousand to one-twenty-five, and now they're up to one-forty-six. And I'm assuming this hasn't been going on very long, so I'm going to assume that nine hundred and sixty-three thousand isn't going to take care of these roads. So if we do annex, and they do start this process, and it costs more money, where does that money come from? And I feel the same way Linda does. Doyle's sitting right here, and it's been in the papers for fifteen years, and you folks who are Rapid City residents, your tax dollars are going to fix something that was broken to begin with. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. We also have a request from Shelley Fisher.
Hi, I'm Shelley Fisher. I reside at five-zero-zero-three Avenue A. I personally do not believe that there will be any benefit to annex in my street on Avenue A for me as a homeowner. We don't have any parks, swimming pools, dog parks, or is there even any plans for any, even if this is annexed in? So that is a big concern of mine, because me as a taxpayer feel that if there are going to be some changes, then those should be some things that should be considered, because I do pay taxes at my house, and I believe that if this is going to make it better, then those should be some things that should be then considered, which they are not even on the table. There's no city transit in that area, nor is there any plans for any city transit. So that doesn't make it better for anybody as a homeowner. I don't personally need it, but it would make the community better, I believe. My road service, as far as repairs and street maintenance, there are no issues on my street, on where I live, on Avenue A. So I don't believe that annexing me in will fix anything that is wrong, because there isn't anything wrong with that part. This puts me in a higher mill levy if I am annexed in, and I do not believe that this is something that I signed up for as a homeowner wanting to live outside of the city limits with a lower mill levy for that purpose. If I wanted to live in Rapid City, I would have chose a home that was in the Rapid City limits with a higher mill levy. This is a mill levy for me that is lower, so then it makes me, more affordable for me as a single breadwinner in my household. And it's, some may not seem like much, but it is when you're adding up over the years of living in that house, the next fifteen, twenty years. And these mill levies, as far as I know, are old mill levies, so we don't even have the new rates as far as what it actually will go up to. The other, several other issues, sorry, I'm kind of rambling here, but I do feel very passionate about this measure not going through. And as far as the cost of the debt to the fire, the debt that the fire department is, or there's some kind of nine hundred and some thousand dollars that this is supposed to be added on to our taxes, I don't feel that that is something that just this small units of a hundred and thirty-some homes should have to take on when that is not just something that just we use. I mean, that is, I mean, that's a little over my head, but I don't feel that that is something that should be added on to our homeowner as a area, what we should have to pay for. And my garbage service, who I currently have with Reber Sanitation, somebody mentioned that it would be a lower cost. My Reber Sanitation bill is less than twenty dollars a month, so I'm not quite sure where the savings would be there, like somebody had mentioned. My, I do agree that Dicky's has some major issues. That street is very wavy. If you've ever driven down it, you will know that this is not a street you want to drive down unless you absolutely have to. And I feel bad for those homeowners, because I feel that, you know, if they're trying to sell those homes, it makes it, I think, very hard for a future homeowner to want to purchase a home on that street, and, you know, it possibly affects their value on their home. And I do feel that that street does need to be repaired, but that does not, I should not have to, on Avenue A, take on what those costs are to fix that street. That should go back to the original developer that has already been mentioned. That is who should take on that cost, not me on Avenue A. And as far as the services, fire, police, and et cetera, those services would stay the same as somebody else already mentioned, so I don't feel that there would be any benefit there either. So as far as any changes would go, that, so I just don't see this as being a benefit to me, or really any of my neighbors, except for the, probably the ones that live on Dicky's that have the major, and maybe a couple little areas. Other than that, it's mainly Dicky's that is, has major road issues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Galen.
Any other speaker requests?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess to first address the fire debt issue, I would propose we volunteer to pay that debt, and then recognizing that as Sarah mentioned, that's a city council decision in the end anyway, so let's just, you know, we get that as our proposed route, and then let city council really make those, that funding decision in the end anyway. So I think maybe that's my first sense on that issue, and as far as, you know, thank you to the, you know, property owners for coming in here and voicing your opinions on this. I think the main benefit is the street repair. And, you know, another question would be, what about, what's the snow removal service? Like, does that change? Does that kind of roll into the whole, you know, system when we take over the streets? Is that another major benefit?
Yes, once the property is annexed, the city will perform snow removal and ongoing maintenance after the major road repairs are made.
Well, I think I'm in favor of that, just based on taking over better management of the streets. I think that's all I'll say about that.
Thank you, Galen. Karen?
Thank you. This area has been trying to annex themselves for ten-plus years. I mean, we've had numerous meetings with the homeowners out there, and people who want to be in the city limits and just can't get enough signatures for one reason or another. And for that reason, it's hard to have a voluntary annexation in this particular place. The fact that they've got seventy-five percent of the property owners, value owners that have already signed and want to be in the annexation area says a lot, because that's grown significantly over the last several years. So in effect, we're saying to those folks out there, you really want to be in the city limits, and you want your streets repaired, and you want to have some of the services. So that's a plus, I think, in this instance. The other thing is, from, for those people out here who say they don't have a benefit, I can see your point of view, and that's typically been something that people who are involuntarily annexed have. They don't want to be in the city limits, they see the dollar signs. But for people who are in the city, when they look at this, for some people who look at this, they have to realize that as city citizens, in our taxes, we pay for things like our recreation areas, our airport to work that, to the civic center. We pay for those through our taxes currently. People who don't live in the city limits don't pay that, and their property taxes don't include that, and they do benefit from that. So there is a benefit for people who live in the city limits who pay those taxes, and those people who live outside the city limits don't pay those taxes, but still receive those benefits. So there's a disparative thing there that I think we as citizens of the city have to realize that there's that aspect that we should take into consideration. The other thing I want to say is, this is an intent to annex. This doesn't finalize anything. This is just our thoughts that we're saying, yes, let's go forward with this. I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion, and there'll probably be more people in the audience who come and say, we don't want to be in the city. But I do believe that this is the right thing to do. I think it's time. I think that street out there is terrible. I've driven on it a lot. I was out there recently on, not Avenue A, but two places north, and I can't remember the street name now, but, and I looked at my city street, and it was plowed, and I live in a small area. And I went through that street, and part of it was plowed, but not the whole thing, and the sidewalks weren't plowed. And so there's some benefits, I think, to having people who live adjacent to the city, so close to the city, to be in the city. And I would definitely support this annexation intent, and I agree that I don't think that we should have the homeowners pay for their fire, that cost for the Rapid Valley Fire, and all the other annexations we've done over the years. We've never made the homeowners contribute that, so if we have a motion, I would like to see that that is an idea to the city council, that we pay that debt to the fire department. So that was my comments.
Thanks, Karen. Mike?
The comment was made that the parks, they don't have the benefits of the parks and so forth. In the comprehensive plan, there are plans for parks and stuff, and one of the things that happens is, if you're not included into the city, there is the radius that we cover. But as we go forward, I think the city is doing a really good job of trying to accomplish some of those things and allow the citizens areas for parks and so forth. And so as we annex, I think that it accomplishes that. It's not immediate, but I think in the end, if we stick to the comprehensive plan that we have, I think those things will happen. So I think it's a good thing to annex this. I have lived close to this neighborhood before, and I understand the benefits of being outside of the city, but there are also some drawbacks. So I think it's a good plan to go forward with, so.
Thank you, Mike. Kurt?
Thank you. I used to live out in Rapid Valley back in the late eighties, early nineties, and I remember going through the, they were trying to get a forced annexation at that time of the entire valley, and the heat and the controversy that that created, you know, the bad feelings. And eventually, of course, it didn't go through, and as I lived out there, I really regretted not getting into the city at that time. The county, bless their Um the 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 county, bless their hearts, you know, tried to plow as much as they could in the in the winter, fix the roads and and they weren't they weren't doing a a very good job. And I I I really wished at that time we would have got the the whole valley annexed and uh um it would have been a good thing. I think this is a good a good one. Uh as far as the roads and the deplorability of them, I I I don't know the the whole history on, you know, how that failed, you know, I read articles in the paper. But um I I assume that, you know, the the developer, when he built those roads, had to had to do a warranty on them and uh if if that if those roads did not meet the the warranty, they failed before that warranty was over, he should be liable to fix them. Uh if if in fact the warranty period had expired, um unfortunately, uh you know, there's not much we can do to to get him to fix those. Those are just my comments. I I I think this is a good a good thing. Um you're always going to have people against it. Unfortunately, the ones that are for it aren't gonna aren't gonna speak up and and we do hear from from the people against it more than we hear from the people who are for it. Um seventy-five percent, I think, is a pretty good number of of people in favor. Um I I think it's good and I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan?
For both parties, but I've got a problem with water and wastewater. They are now under their own uh with Rapid Valley. And uh when would the city be responsible for the water and wastewater? Uh if they tear up the streets, that would be the time to replace the water and wastewater lines. Uh how old are are the lines that are there now? Uh and what are and what are they made of? Uh if they're the old cast iron, why uh the average life of those really isn't that long? And if we will be responsible uh five years to ten years down the road, uh uh like I mentioned, if they're going to tear up the streets to get them done, uh that would be the time to take care of the water and wastewater.
Ted, do you think you may be able to answer this one?
Thanks, I'll try. Um I believe that's addressed in the analysis or the study. It's in Rapid Valley Sanitary District. They are Rapid Valley Sanitary District Utilities. They would maintain those. They wouldn't revert to city or be converted to city. They remain Rapid Valley Sanitary District. They're new materials. They were built when the streets were built. So whenever that was constructed, those utilities were put in at that time. And they're PVC modern materials. They're not duct wire as far as I know. So they're they're newer materials, the same life as the street is or same installate- installed at the same time as the streets. Whenever that was, ten years old, twelve years old, something like that. Seventeen. I don't. That was built before I was here, my time. I'm not sure. I know there is a span in there when that was built. Maybe went back to nineteen ninety-eight, so I guess they're older than that, but they're relatively new in utility life. But I guess if yeah, if there is some improvements and I there may be some that go with some of the street construction that need to be corrected as part of that failures, but they're still relatively new material, new new installation.
Thank you. Uh I've got no more lights up to speak on this. Uh we don't have a motion on the floor though unless there's other questions or comments. Okay, Galen made the motion to approve the resolution of intent to annex with the recommendation to the city council that Rapid City pays the debt to the uh Fire District. Karen seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh can we do a roll call just to make sure I got it?
Braun?
Aye.
Brewer? Bowman?
Aye.
Mike Goller? Oh pardon, he's his alternate. Herr? Bogusat? Huss? I'm sorry, I've lost. What what were we holding for? I'm going back to Bowman. John Herr? Thank you. Galen? Thank you. Huss? Rollinger?
No.
Schmidt? Sullivan? I have two noes. The remainder are ayes.
Okay, the motion carries. Item number fifteen. Karen Bowman is going to step down from the commission for items fifteen and sixteen.
Good morning. Patsy Horton, Long Range Planning Manager. This application is an item to reallocate tax term tax increment financing uh project costs to reflect the actual costs of the projects. Um this is tax increment district number thirty-eight. It's called Heartland Retail Center and it is an economic development tax increment district. It's located um along Elkvale Road, generally beginning um near Homestead, extending east to include some portions of Beal along the interstate and then over to the city limits boundary adjacent to Box Elder. So there's the actual boundary. This is a photo from two thousand three, two thousand two that identifies um generally uh very little development. This photo is from two thousand fifteen. You'll see several um new development structures um just east of Elkvale Road adjacent to Eglin. You've got some new structures immediately adjacent to Elkvale Road. And just a real quick um tax increment district um one-on-one class for you. When a new district is created, this little section here is called the base valuation. That amount always goes to our taxing agencies. So as of today's um existing mill levy, which is twenty fifteen, um seventy-three thousand dollars goes to taxes for the school district, for the West Dakota Water District, for the city of Rapid City, and then also the county. As development occurs, any new valuation based on that development is called the tax increment. That amount goes to pay for um the public improvements that were approved with this particular district. So back in two thousand three, the valuation was three point three million. At the year-end valuation, which we just got from the um state revenue department, that value now is thirty-seven point eight million. And so any amount over this three million is what is um used to pay for the public improvements. So here are a couple um photos for you. This is at the very eastern edge of the district. This is looking south from uh De Geest. You can see the new water tower that the city has constructed since two thousand three. These are some uh of the development structures. You have a motel. You have a couple uh fast food restaurants. This is um Cheyenne Boulevard, which is also Eglin Street when you get east of or west of uh Elkvale. You've got the new university center. Here's that um motel again and then the restaurants that you're seeing from uh the east looking to the west. And then you have a view from the west looking east. This is uh Cheyenne Boulevard. Um we were looking at pictures um at the very eastern edge. You've got a couple restaurants. You've got um another motel over here. Here's the motel that we looked at previously. And then this is a view from Eglin Street um just west of Elkvale looking to the north. You have another hotel. You have Dakota Steakhouse. And so here we have um the original project plan that identified the costs and what we were going to get. And here is actually a map of um the public improvements. We had a water line extension along Elkvale. It connects over to the water tower and then also um it's a reservoir, excuse me, it's not a tower. Um then it also connects down to Anamosa Street. We have the construction of Cheyenne Boulevard over to the eastern edge. We have um some drainage facilities um to to accommodate um our stormwater. There were a couple of other projects that were identified that were completed by others. There's a signal at um Eglin and Elkvale Road that was completed by the DOT. We have um originally a lift station that was identified that was completed by someone else. And because the lift station wasn't included, the applicant could then put in a gravity sewer instead of a force main. So this item, this item, and this item were completed by other individuals. So here we have an overview of what's going on with um the project plan. And I broke it up into phases because that's how it's been certified. So here is the original project plan costs. Back in uh two thousand four, the council amended it to include some additional water main features for the city. And then these today are the revisions that um you're considering so that these are the final costs that the applicant can certify. So all of these costs here for phase one um are certifiable and they have already done that. And the city has already paid for phase one. And here is phase two, which included generally the construction of Eglin, the detention dam, and based on our existing policy, we also um received twenty thousand dollars in an additional imputed administrative fee and then, of course, the financing that goes with it. One of the things to note is that the the total project costs for the plan have not changed. So only the um adjustments for the actual costs are considered. Here is, and I know it's uh pretty detailed, but this is the um amortization schedule. As you can see, we have already paid off the first amounts that they have certified. And we have um uh one point five million that we anticipate to pay off for the um second phase plus the interest amount. And there's always a question about, you know, what the valuation is for all of the districts in our community. And so this is this is our um sheet. You'll see here uh tax increment district number thirty-eight. It is generating based on um twenty fifteen receipts, about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars every year. And so we anticipate that the TID will this particular TID will pay off by uh twenty twenty. Um these are this is the fund balance that um we had received based on the receipts that we have gotten from the end of uh November, so there's five hundred and eighty-three thousand available today to go toward phase two. And we anticipate in twenty seventeen receipts of six hundred and ten thousand dollars. And those are all increment funds. And so again, here's the boundary. These are the improvements that were made, the water line that came in generally along here, extended over to the tank, connects down here to Anamosa Street. We have Eglin Street. You can see um just from the photo, some additional drainage improvements that were required um based on the new phase two stormwater requirements from EPA. So there's some little, there's a technical term for it. Looks like little bitty dams. I don't know what that is, but anyway. Then there's a dam right here and there was also a detention pond right there. And again, the improvements that were made, but with that, um we do recommend approval of the reallocation cost as presented. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or find an engineer that can get you the technical terms.
Thanks, Patsy. Um I'm not seeing anything right away. I I have one question. It's more um clarification for me. That you said that the phase one costs have been certified, uh and it's phase two that's left to certify. Do the is the increment still locked at the two thousand three or I guess four when it was amended the last time? Is that is that where it stands right now, the the base value?
The base value actually um is determined when the district is created, so it starts from two thousand three. So anything over and above the two thousand three valuation is what's used to pay off those improvements. That's the increment.
Okay. Thank you. Uh Galen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um so although I supported this maybe at the first meeting, my opinion has maybe changed just a little bit now that I've gotten some better understanding of this process. So um I've been hoping to hear a little more of the other side of the story in terms of what are the negative consequences of this and and all TIFs in general. So you know, the the important thing to know is maybe this, I didn't really pick this up on the first time that this really what we're talking about is this delays the payoff for another three to four years until twenty twenty is what I gathered today. So we're talking about that's almost thirty-five million in tax revenue that our school district in Pennington County is not receiving and for another four years. So to me, that's kind of the negative aspect. I'm not sure if that persuades me to not support this anymore, but that's something that I I think we need to make sure we take into consideration here. So do you have any other insights on that is correct? Basically, we're we're talking about not paying this off as originally intended, correct?
One of one of the things that happens um when i- i- if you choose not to reallocate the costs as the expenses um were incurred, the applicant can still certify based on the current project plan that's been amended. So the amounts in this middle column, they can still receive those funds back. We will still have to pay on the financing until it come and until it's paid off. So you know, the they will just be limited on the amounts that they can receive back based on the existing line items that have been approved. Typically, in the past, um we've looked at um generally all of the districts that have been amended um since two thousand seven and almost all of them. And generally, it's it's very common to have a reallocation because when the tax increment district is first established, their estimates, things come up, you know, it costs more for some items than it does for others. Um for example, this particular item is so much higher because they had to put in a huge box culvert to get from the south of Eglin Street to the detention ponds on the north. And then they also had to add those additional stormwater features that I referenced earlier because of the new regulations from EPA. So those things weren't anticipated in two thousand three when the plan was originally put together. And and there are higher costs, um especially here because of those additional requirements. But um you know.
Well, the so there you're saying there is an increase in the total project cost, whereas you previously said it was just a reallocation. So it's really an increase that's being made up for by a couple additional years of.
When no, no. Um let me let me go back. See, see, there were some items that were um not completed. Those funds are being reallocated to where the costs were higher. Um the bottom line doesn't change at all. And actually, um based on the increments that are generated, the financing costs are going to be lower because now there's a better interest rate than originally anticipated. Um so really, this 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 is this is a a consistent procedure with what everything that we've done in the past with all of our other TIFs.
So, okay, kind of my last comment along those lines is, you know, we I I remember seeing the history that that uh Mr. Shoffey showed last time of, you know, this isn't new. This these get reallocated, amended all the time. Do these ever get paid off earlier?
Yes, they do.
Okay. What's kind of the track record of?
Um usually.
In general terms?
Usually TIFs are paid off in ten to twelve to fifteen years. You know, depending on, you know, all of the extra development.
Just one clarification to the, the thirty-five million that you offered, that's not taxes paid, it's the valuation.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yep, yep, just wanted to make sure. No, no.
So, so again, this is the amount that we anticipate for receipts in twenty seventeen. This is our balance that we have in the fund right now after phase-one was paid off. And so as you look at the amounts that, let's see if I can find it. So here, when you look at the principal amount, and you have the one point two million available to pay, you know, what's in the account right now, plus, you know, what we anticipate the rest of the year, I, I still think it's, it's, it's a good value for the, for the city.
Thanks, Patsy. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Patsy, just a quick question off of Galen's comment. Originally, in two thousand and three, was this a twenty-year amortization? So twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three would have been...
I, I think it was twenty sixteen that it was originally anticipated to pay off.
Okay, so it was that lag in development out there that has pushed this beyond. And just, once again, if the, we just don't have very many economic development tools that generate items, so I've consistently supported financing of public improvements, and this is, this is one of them. Looks to me like payoff is, is going to benefit the other minis- the other tax entities once it's done. Otherwise, it might still be a three million dollar valuation. So I'm gonna be in support of the motion. Matter of fact, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
John made the motion to approve revision number two to the project plan, reallocating project costs for tax increment district number thirty-eight. Steve, do you wanna comment?
No, I was gonna basically say what John said.
Okay. With the motion on the floor, any further comments, questions on the motion?
Back to the...
We've got a second for Steve. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That was Galen? Okay. The motion carries with a no from Galen.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, thank you, John. Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
Steve seconded to extend past nine o'clock. Appreciate you watching out. Item sixteen.
This is another reallocation. This is tax increment district sixty-four. It was established to entice Cabela's retail establishment into our community. This is a picture from two thousand and seven, when the district was created, that identifies that generally the only thing in the district south of Mall Drive was the Visitor Information Center, and then these existing properties here that were developed. So today, this is the picture from twenty fifteen, we still have those existing parcels that were developed, but then we have all of these additional improvements that have been made within the district. There were two public improvements that were identified, a land swap for portions of this property for Cabela's, and then also this lift station that was constructed. So again, you know, you have your base valuation, which for this particular district was eight point seven million, and then the increment that's now being generated at one point five million, the current year-end valuation based on the revenue department's newly released information is at seven point nine million. These are the amounts that are now being forwarded to our taxing entities today until the district is paid off. The first, these are pictures generally of some area just north of the lift station. Here we have pictures looking, you know, at the different developments along Dakota Craft Drive, and this is looking from the western boundary to the east. Here you have the Visitor Information Center, you can see Cabela's, there are a couple hotels in here, there's a restaurant, some additional industrial development in here. More pictures of the area to the, on the eastern boundary, Cabela's, a couple motels, some additional development here going on. And then this is our public improvements map, here is the property for Cabela's, here's the lift station, and here you see a picture of the actual lift station that was constructed. And these are the original costs that were identified based on the two thousand and seven general estimates. We had two point five million for the lift station, we anticipated seven point three million for the real property assembly costs, we anticipated nine point eight million for interest, and then some, a total cost of twenty-one point nine million. Today, we are requesting a change, an increase in the lift station costs, a decrease in the real property costs, a decrease in the financing, and then some sewer design and some construction administration, of course, the twenty thousand dollar administrative fee that's required. And so, again, the base value, the, the base of the total project cost does not change, but just the associated costs with the actual expenditures. Here are the amortization schedules. We anticipate, based on, you know, the existing revenue, that the first phase or the land costs will pay off in twenty twenty, and then the sewer lift station will pay off in twenty twenty-seven. Just as a side note, this district did not start collecting any kind of revenue until twenty fifteen, because there was an overlapping TIF that constructed this portion of Mall Drive that was just recently paid off, and so now the increment is now going to tax increment district sixty-four to be paid. And we anticipate that within eight to ten years, that that being paid off. So with that, we do recommend approval of those reallocated costs to match the expenses. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I move to approve.
Steve made the motion to approve this, another cost reallocation for tax increment district sixty-four. Kim seconded that motion. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Galen as a no. Any discussion items, staff items today? I'd look for a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion. I move to adjourn. Can I get a second? I'll say that Kim seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Not gonna get today.